Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. To the viewing audience, we appreciate you tuning in. If you will stand, Councilman Green will have our invocation and lead us in our pledge.
Let's pray. I'm most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us every day. Please make us especially mindful of those blessings that we take for granted, graciously put upon us. Please be with those who are suffering from debilitating diseases, our troops, especially those overseas and their families, our first responders. In Jesus' name we pray.
Our pledge. United States of America and to the Republic for one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thank you, Buddy. Item on our agenda, of course, is our audience for visitors. If we have anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. We've seen none. We'll ask, we need to approve our minutes. We get the motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, should I amend the?
You can, yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding an item two under new business, appointments to the library advisory board and the architectural review board.
Second. All right, motion made second that we add those resolutions to under item two under new business. Any concerns, comments regarding that change? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And approval of the, of our regular session, January the 11th?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular session of January 11th, 2021.
Second.
That motion made second, we adopt those minutes. Any concerns, comment? Not, Ms. Kim, please?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero and one extension.
Thank you, ma'am. Item on our new agenda is a free budget, uh, public hearing. I don't see anybody here that wants to address that, but we will certainly open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here maybe I'm missing. They would like to share anything regarding our upcoming budget. Any comments, any concerns, any wants, any wishes? Be glad to hear you at this time. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to new business. Resolution and ordinance for fiscal year 2021 for general fund UTV grant funding.
Good evening.
Tonight, we bring forward to you a grant that the police department received on behalf of Firehouse Sub Public Safety Foundation. They received a grant to purchase a Polaris UTV vehicle for around $24,000. So in front of you, you do have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum with the PCOSIN as well as Firehouse Sub, as well as the ordinance appropriating the funds in order to purchase the ATV.
Questions or comments? Somebody's really doing a heck of a job on those grants.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's pretty remarkable, actually. So I know, I know I appreciate it. I'm sure all the council does.
And I believe the credit goes to TJ Farrington on this grant for the police department.
Okay. Any questions, any comments? Right, we get a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the grant for Polaris XP 1000 EPS utility terrain vehicle with bike kit, siren, PA system, winch, and rescue squid.
Second, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Thomas. All right, we have a motion second that we approve the resolution. Any concerns or comments regarding that? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Kim, thank you so much. All right, item two, the item that we added to the agenda.
We've got an ordinance to do, Mr. Mayor.
Where's the ordinance?
It's an ordinance transferring the funds for that vehicle.
We're in a new business, right?
Yeah, it's, it's right behind the.
I don't see it.
It's right behind the resolution in your package.
In the package?
Yeah.
Absolutely. You're right. I'm wrong. It's a resolution made for Mr. Library Advisory Board and Architectural Review Board?
No, it's an ordinance making additional appropriations.
Oh, yeah, okay. I got you. I got you. Okay. All right, we, we get a motion in a second for that. I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations for fiscal year 2021 and the general fund to pay for that vehicle.
Second. We have a motion second that we adopt a resolution. Any concerns or comments? Apologize for not seeing that. Okay, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews? Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we go to the resolution now, the item two under new business?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution making appointments to the library advisory board with the names of Kathleen Powell and Billy Borders, and their terms will expire January 31st, 2024. And for the architectural review board, Mr. Timothy O. Trant II and Patricia E. Gillis, whose terms will expire January 31st, 2021 for Mr. Trant and January 31st, 2022 for Ms. Gillis.
Second. All right, we've got a motion made second. We adopt the resolution. Will those names inserted? Any concerns, comments? All right, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Canela?
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Comments to City Manager Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two items tonight. I'll do the short one so that I don't forget it on the back end of the larger one. I've been, people have been asking me about town. Perhaps they've been asking you. Folks have seen the activity in the former R and R Seafood Building. The restaurant right here used to be the combination Taco Bell, we call it the Kentaco Hut. That is a new restaurant which is slated to open on or about May 1st. And the name of that restaurant will be the Blue Crab and Purple Pig Bistro. And just to let you know and the public know what's going on there. And the, the other item, more substantive, is to provide you an update and the community update on our community's COVID-19 response. I'll start with just letting you know where we are right now. This following information all came off the state's website today. So if people want to follow up on it, if you just Google Virginia Department of Health COVID-19, all these numbers are available to you. But as of today, we've had 568 reported cases of COVID-19 and PCOSIN. Our first case, we had in March, March 26th of last year. Since that time, again, 568 of, of special concern is the fact that 65 of those were in the last week. So unlike some areas like Williamsburg, there was a hotspot early on. For a long time, they were significantly ahead of us in terms of cases. A couple of Fridays ago, we passed them in total cases reported. And now we're approximately 100 ahead of them. So this is a, is a very real and active thing in our community right now. 16 of our residents, according to the state's website, have been hospitalized and unfortunately, seven have passed away from COVID, again, according to the state's website. To give you a, perhaps the beginning of some encouraging news, the same website lists the number of persons that have been vaccinated in each community. For PCOSIN, today, the number of people that have received at least one vaccination is 568. And 82 people of that subset have been fully vaccinated. I would point out to you that, very important caveat, persons that were vaccinated through DoD or the VA are not counted in that number. So our actual number is higher than that. State hasn't figured out a way to get and to translate the federal government vaccinations onto the state's count. But just to point out that those are, are separate. Last Friday, our area, the Peninsula Health District, which is really a shared administration also with the Hampton Health District, moved into the priority 1B vaccination effort. What that means is that essentially, the vast majority of the 1A folks that were wanting a vaccine have been able to get it. And the move to 1B just begins the vaccination of a much larger group of people. And the recent decision to add persons 65 and older to the group was not done because there was an abundance of vaccine. It just made the group larger, but the vaccine supply hasn't really changed. So the health district, Peninsula Health District, is a creature of the state Virginia Department of Health. There's been lots of understandable confusion as to what a local health district is. It's not the city's health district. It's not even our region's. It's the state's regional health district. They make the decisions on what, whether or not we're in 1B, whether we're ready to proceed to 1C. And they, along with the private health systems like Riverside, like Centerra, are really the, the core of the vaccination mission. Now, having said that, the local governments in our area, Hampton Roads generally, and probably all of Virginia, have been frustrated by the pace of the rollout as well as the pace of the dissemination of the vaccine itself. It starts there. I've heard as recently as today, the number of vaccinations, vaccine doses that are coming to Virginia on a weekly basis outside the federal allotment is about 110,000 for the whole state. So being, being problem solvers, being frustrated and wanting to help our communities, the Peninsula managers, which include the managers of Hampton Road, of Hampton, Newport News, York County, myself, James City County, and Williamsburg, have been working together as a group and in pairs to put together a capability to deliver a vaccination site which could potentially become a future mass vaccination site. Our partner is Hampton. We've worked with them. Newport News and York are working together and James City, Williamsburg. But having said that, we're all working together, really, in three different sites. On Friday, of this past Friday, we began at those sites, limited 1B vaccinations for, for public employees who met the, the category for front-facing essential personnel, the 1B personnel. This vaccine did not come to us. It ultimately came to us from the health department, but it really came from Centerra Health System through the health department. There's a limited amount of supply that was made available for these public employees. So they began on Friday. And the focus at the Hampton site was completing the, any one of their employees that were the 1A employees, which is really EMS-type employees, and then moving to things like police officers, fire, hazmat corrections, and then public school systems. So that began on Friday. Our first vaccination effort there at the convention center is tomorrow. Same group of people finishing out 1A. Finishing out our police officers that have not yet gotten a shot, moving to emergency services, and then on to, to public schools. It's a total of 50, so we're certainly not going to, to get it all done. But it's a start. We have to provide the vaccinators, our EMS people, who may ultimately be supported by and augmented by community volunteers. We've had, we've had a nurse volunteer. We've had a pharmacist volunteer. We're working those into the system. But we're doing this in concert with Hampton, but we provide our own people for the stuff that is PCOSIN-specific. As we, as we work towards the larger issues of who can do what, we know we can do our own. And so that, that will start tomorrow. That's a test for us. It'll be day two for Hampton and day one for us. And it's my hope that by the end of the week, or certainly next week, there'll be an additional allocation. We'll be ready to continue to move on that list. Meanwhile, the Peninsula Health District, information I received today, their primary focus at the moment is finishing out 1A and also those persons 75 and older. They are making appointments, but their capacity is limited. So if you were a person 75 and older, I would suggest that you also contact your private healthcare provider and see if they can help you. And if they can't now, make sure you get on the list when they might be able to. And that would also include people 65 and older that have maybe an underlying health condition that makes it even more important that they get prioritized towards the front. The, that is, that is where we are right now. The health systems have deployed the vaccines that they had generally, and they're waiting to get more through the health department process as well. We're, we have been getting about 1,000 doses a week for our combined Hampton and Peninsula Health Departments for the last few weeks. And that includes everything the health department is doing with their clinics, selected supportive pharmacies, and, and potentially at some point, support for efforts like ours with Hampton. That number is expected to go, to grow, I should say, but it has not grown yet. We have come together with Hampton, as York has with Newport News, and Williamsburg has with James City County, to push our resources in so that we can be as ready as we possibly can to help the health department with their mission. At present, between our three sites, we have throughput capacity which exceeds what the local health department can do right now. And it is all there, available to support their efforts in supporting the Peninsula vaccination. As soon as we get sufficient supply of vaccine, I think we're, we're ready to go. We're, in fact, we're chomping to get ready to go. And we have, we have been drilling for these types of things for years in Hampton Roads. Whether it's a short-term major disruption like a hurricane or a pandemic like avian flu or H1N1. Well, this is a little different than anything anyone's experienced in 100 years. We know how to pull together and get it done. And so we're, we're ready. When the vaccine supply comes our way, the health department has the capability to deliver it, we'll simply ask them, what can we do to help? But if they need us to help deliver that, we are ready. And, and so are our partners on the Peninsula. And I think I can speak for all of the rest of, of Hampton Roads. I'll stop in a second, but before I do, I do want to thank, in the very early days of this, when vaccine first became available, the Riverside Health System provided vaccines to our EMS providers. They were the 1A folks that I referenced before. And recently, Centerra, within the stock that they had, agreed to provide it to our police officers when we were getting ready to go into 1B. Now, we ran out of appointments before we ran out of police officers that needed it. So the rest of them are going tomorrow. But my point in saying that is that both of the private health systems have been a very good partner in our community. They've been a good partner to us. And in between the local government, the health department, and the private health agencies, we're ready. We just need the vaccine. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions, recognizing that I'm not a doctor and this isn't really our mission, but, but we're getting ready to help deliver it anyway.
Questions of the management at all? I can say this, I'm sorry, Carrie, go ahead.
Question, just a comment. Would you comment further on the stuff that Hampton is providing and why we don't have the resources and capability to do this in town?
Sure. Well, there, there are a couple of reasons. At the, at the scale that we're doing now, we could probably do it. But we're, we're planning for mass vaccinations. You know, potentially hundreds, if not more, vaccinations a day. So at the convention center, as I said before, we're, we're asked to bring vaccinators, which is essentially a two-person team that has EMS and/or other members of the medical reserve corps that have been trained and certified to do shots. Two persons per team. A team right now can do anywhere between six to 10 vaccinations an hour. So we have to bring sufficient to do our own people. And I would expect, when it's time to do general population, it'll be our, our citizens. In addition, we bring registration folks to help with that. What Hampton provides in this partnership, in addition to that for their own people, they've got a standby ambulance. They've got a full EMS crew that is working the room where people sit and wait. They have the custodial staff, the traffic control staff, as well as the large parking lot, large facility. We, we would be hard-pressed to do it at scale here. If we have to send two vaccinator teams and post up an ambulance and also have an EMS crew essentially monitoring the, the, the waiting area after you get your shot, we pretty quickly run out of people. And so by doing this with Hampton, we're able to take advantage of the things that they were going to do anyway, in terms of economy of scale, and bring along those things that are specific to us. And, and certainly, as we go further into this, if we have additional resources from us that are needed to support the larger effort, we'll provide them to the best of our ability.
Okay, any other questions, Buddy?
Randy, do you have any contact information that people that are eligible for the 1B rollout, how they should get in touch with whomever to register for this?
Nothing, nothing that's particularly good, to be honest. The health department is taking the lead on finishing the 1A and, and the person 75 and older. I've heard anecdotal stories today of people trying to go through the, the state's 1B process and to only be told that if they're not 75 or older, it's not yet the time. So they're not accepting, as far as I know, this for persons under 65 that might be in, in the 1B group. The vaccine that was provided to us was provided to us specifically for our public employees. As more vaccine supply comes, I think that will, that will free up. But right now, we're dealing with a, the supply of vaccine is the number one big problem because I think we've got everything else figured out. But as I said before, if you are 65 and older and have a underlying health condition or you have, or you're older than 75, in addition to, to trying the health department's process, I would encourage you to contact your doctor because eventually it will be available through, through them as well, particularly if they are affiliated with a major health system.
Any other questions? We need, we need to, it needs to be said, Randy, the, the work that you've done and Mary Bunning backing you up, it's a great team. It's a great team and, and actually, we talked about it today at mayor's and chairs. There's been an unlimited amount of letters that have been written to our delegations in Richmond, in Washington, to the health department where somebody's problem really is. Once they get those, those, those vaccines, they, they need to kind of get moving on those.
of get moving on those vaccines and not let them sit around, uh, people, people need to get them, and, uh, I don't think anybody's been on top of it anymore than you have, Randy, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure council appreciates it as well. Anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All righty. Council directors, Mr. Southall.
Yes, sir. Uh, again, I'd like to thank Randy and his team for their efforts, and thank everybody here and at home for paying attention to the city government. Um, I also would like to correct a deficiency that I made. Uh, last week, um, I properly congratulated you and Carrie, uh, for being, for you being back to the mayor and Carrie for being reappointed as vice mayor, but I neglected to congratulate Kim and Christina, okay? And I dearly apologize for that, and congratulations to them for their new appointment.
Thank you, Buddy, thank you.
Yeah?
No, no additional comments from what Bud said, I just second what he said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, nothing additional, just, and I know, he knows, but if there's anything this council can do, uh, for you, Mr. Manager, don't hesitate to, uh, let us know. I know, uh, any of us are willing to get in this chamber at any time and do anything we have to, to, uh, get this vaccine rolling and get rid of those fires. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recognize and thank state delegate Martha Mugler sponsoring House Bill 1917, which addresses a publication of certain notices on a local site. She is doing this at the request of the State of Wisconsin, and I'd like to thank again Councilman Canela for working with delegate Mugler. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no further comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Green?
One thing, Mr. Mayor, tomorrow is our Mobile Food Pantry Day, and it will be at the old city hall at the Parkson Rec Building. It'll be another drive-through, uh, uh, from all indications, it's going to be a wet one, but we'll have plenty of volunteers and we're making extra attempts to keep everything dry and put it into people's car. Our host tomorrow is the Virginia Peninsula Realtors Association, and they always do a great job, and that is from 10 to 1 tomorrow morning.
Good job, Buddy. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, Councilman Canela has a birthday today, I think we need to at least wish him a happy birthday, and, uh, at the same time, he went to work today, which I think is, is, is good, but happy birthday to you and your sister. I know that, uh, I know that Jackie's probably got a big meal waiting for you, or a big cake or something when you get home. Um, if, you know, we, we, we have a, uh, one of our own, Graham, who's in the hospital, I did talk to Seth earlier this afternoon, um, we need to take the time, each of us, and at least send him a text to encourage him. He, he's, he's, um, I don't want to say he's not doing well, but he's not doing as well as he could be, and hopefully, um, in the next few days, he'll perk up, but he, he needs some encouragement. So if you get an opportunity and you could send him a text, uh, I think that would be much appreciated by his family, and, and I think, uh, Graham would appreciate it as well. We talked about the health department, uh, every jurisdiction is doing the very same thing that Randy just, just talked about. Um, they're trying to get the, the, the vaccines, and as soon as they get them, as Randy said, everybody's ready to go. You've got to have the vaccines before you can move forward. Um, just to touch on the, the bill that, that David, uh, brought up, the, the bill that was, um, introduced by Martha Mugler, um, we talked with, um, the chairman of that committee who sent that bill to a subcommittee, we talked to the chairman of the subcommittee, who then wanted to send it back to the committee without doing anything, um, so basically what's happened to the bill is just dropped through the cracks. Um, and I can tell you that, and I know this for a fact, what we were asking for was PCOSIN to be separated from, from, from all other jurisdictions, which is not something that's unusual in the General Assembly. It, it happens all the time. Either do something from 15,000 down, 20,000 down, or just kind of send us off on our own and allow us to use our own website to advertise so that we could then reduce our fees that we have to pass on to, to the general public. Um, I frankly do not see that bill going anywhere, and last year, excuse me, two years ago, there were several bills that, that were, that were passed, uh, in the House, they went through the Senate as well, and they, they were concerned with only one jurisdiction. So it's not unusual, and it wasn't an unusual request either. Um, but for whatever reason, they decided that, that they just don't want to talk to, talk about it. Um, and I think it's a shame, I think Martha did the best she could do. Uh, I know she had data support and Thomas has talked to her a number of times, um, but that's pretty much where it is right now, and, and, uh, be getting any relief from the General Assembly just doesn't look like it's happening. Okay, um, anybody else have anything else? Did we miss something, or? Okay, if not, have a motion to adjourn.
A move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made second, we adjourn. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, ma'am, and we are adjourned.